All right, Sheila, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, the time is now 7:00 PM and I will call the meeting to order and maybe we have roll call, please.
Mayor Eichel?
Here.
Rotem Henrichan?
Here.
Trustee Britton?
Here.
Trustee Claussen?
Here.
Trustee Flores?
Here.
Trustee Poston?
Here.
Trustee Seifert?
Here.
All right, maybe we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the representative of the one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. All right, the first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. For those attending in person, a sign in sheet is available in the council chambers, which I think we had someone sign in tonight, or a couple people maybe?
We have one, Mr. Doug White.
Okay, we'll go online first and then we'll have Doug up after that, so. Sheila, do you have any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
You're muted.
Sorry, yeah, I did not see anyone, or have any phone calls or emails today, and I do not see any raised hands.
All right, thank you. Then we'll call Doug up to the table. You could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Doug White. I own Gold Ring Pawn at the edge of town, among other properties in town. Basically, I'm here to apologize to Nicole for my behavior a couple weeks ago. That being said, enforcement of the code without common sense is not a virtue. And if you poke a dog long enough, he's gonna bite. But I still apologize to Nicole and anybody else I offended. I know that everybody knows Janet was a hard cookie to crack. But at least I could sit down and have a civil conversation with Janet. Don't know if I'll be able to do that now. But I'm gonna move forward, try to liquidate my holdings, and move on. I apologize, but I'll deal with who I have to deal with to get done what I need to get done. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anybody else signed in?
Nope, just one.
That's it, okay. All right. Then moving right along, we will jump into the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains the minutes of the October 10th, 2023 Board of Trustees meeting. Resolution number 30, Series 2023, a resolution supporting the execution of the agreement for a Garfield County Federal Mineral Lease District grant in the amount of $25,000 for a total project cost of $56,559 in order to offset the costs associated with the purchasing of a new public works vehicle for the Town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. And it also has Resolution number 31, Series 2023, a resolution supporting the execution of the agreement for a Garfield County Federal Mineral Lease District grant in the amount of $183,000 for a total project cost of $262,498.90 in order to offset the costs associated with the refurbishment of a 150,000 gallon potable water storage tank for the Town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. Would anyone like to discuss any of those items separately or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
A second.
All right. Motion by trustee Claussen to approve the consent agenda as written, and that was seconded by trustee Seifert. All's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
Nothing here.
None here, so.
I have none either. Does staff or the board have any agenda changes tonight?
Sheila, did we have one? I think that one, we ended up not having it, is that right?
We had, we actually had an additional P&amp;Z application submitted. It actually got stuck in the spam folder and we didn't retrieve it until this morning. I did make contact with the gentleman and he did pull his application as he was out of town this evening, said he would try to get on another board sometime in the near future.
Okay. All right, any board members have any agenda changes?
None here.
Nope.
Okay. Then the next item on the agenda is the interviews for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we're just gonna go the list that's on the agenda as they're written. So first up will be Joe Franzen. Would you like to come to the table?
Yes.
Find some paper. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Yeah. So would you like to just tell us a little bit about yourself and then we'll ask some questions?
I'm Joe Franzen. I have lived here for about 15 months. I lived most of my life in Leadville. I recently retired from Ski Cooper.
Can you move the microphone just a little closer to you?
Is that better?
Yeah, there you go, thank you.
Okay, as I said, I'm Joe Franzen. I moved here about 15 months ago. I recently retired from Ski Cooper after 30 years of service there primarily as a manager. I lived in Leadville most of my life. I have served on a couple of small boards. One was the Advocates of Lake County. The second board was for our fire department for the volunteers over the years. Partly why we have moved down here was for our health and partly to get out of the altitude. And this was somewhat of a lifelong dream to be in Garfield County, Glenwood Springs, Rifle area. I want to get more interested, or more involved in the community, learn more about the community. Planning and zoning is a thing that is very important to a community, particularly a bedroom community, in that we need to have the right businesses here to improve our tax base, to improve the quality of life within the community.
Okay. All right.
If you got on the board, what is one of the things you see that sticks out to you that you'd like to change or get moving on, or something that you see as troubling with the town?
As I see, watching a lot of the board meetings and stuff, it's like a lot of other towns, getting your, getting the community involved. And then when decisions are made, that the community is aware of those decisions, is backing the community, and is just ready for those changes within the community. Other things I would like to see is, it would be lovely to see our main street become very full of different businesses that are good for the community. And what I mean by the community is the people that live here, the people that visit here. So it takes in a broad spectrum.
Thank you.
What would it be your vision for the town's growth in population within the next 10 to 20 years? And how would you propose that we would draw maybe new codes and make some changes to support that growth? Opening the question, whatever you want to say.
Well, what I'm gonna say is, because I'm not as familiar with the community as I should be as yet, and what the boundaries are, I don't know. I know our biggest issue within the community right now seems to be drinking water, and then eventually it's going to be sewage or the treatment of those things. So we have to base some of our planning on what's gonna be available. We also have to be, look at what land we have still within the city and what is going to be available to be annexed if need be. And we need to look at overall, who is our community? Who are the people that are wanting to live in Silt? Are they younger people? Are they older people? Are they middle-aged people? Are they people that are gonna wanna build, have businesses here? Or are they gonna have people that are willing to commute to Glenwood Springs, or Aspen, or Grand Junction for work?
Okay, I like your answer. It just encompasses the troubleshooting of some of the issues that we are looking at currently and we also want to keep addressing. Excellent answer.
So sometimes codes are broken knowingly by businesses and stuff. How do you feel about upholding the penalties to like try to keep, you know, people on the same page and fair across the board?
I think that that is one thing that I used to see in Leadville was they would have a code, they would issue a permit, and then they would not enforce some of the rules. I think as long as we're able to go back and relook at the circumstances of why this was not upheld or why it was not completed, then I think it's a good thing. And I think, believe the biggest thing is not to penalize, but to work with the people, to educate them and to accomplish your goals.
I guess to piggyback on trustee Flores's question, and how do you feel about town codes? You know, and you may not have been here long enough to kind of look at ours, but you know, do you feel they're too onerous? Or do you feel they should be, you know, more strict or less strict?
I guess one, before I answer that, I would have a question that I don't know about the Town of Silt. Is the Town of Silt statutory or a home rule?
Or a home rule.
Okay. Since it's a home rule, you can have more flexibility to make those rules and to change those rules within the community. So I think that would be part of my answer, is I think there's just more flexibility. And there are sometimes rules that are too stringent, there are sometimes rules that are not stringent enough, but those are all things that need to be reviewed and will change as the population changes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to go ahead?
I only have one.
Go for it. It might be one of mine.
Can you provide any examples of businesses or business types that you feel would represent? And I'm quoting from one of your answers, reasonable and responsible growth for Silt. As a citizen, what would you like to have here?
Well, I would like to see a grocery store. I would like to see a mercantile store. I would see, like to see really more of a general hardware and lumber store here. I know we have a couple of different things, but it has to be stuff that is within the community. Example, Leadville has a, is a recreational and a mining community, not a farming community, but yet they have a, like a tractor supply store that is struggling to make, to work within the community. My understanding is it's eventually gonna go out of business. So you want to bring, try and bring in the businesses that are gonna be good for the community is what I'm saying.
I like the fact you mentioned arteries, sir.
Trustee Britton, do you have any?
No.
Okay. So you did have one of my questions, and now I'm down to two. There's a lot of discussion up and down this valley about affordable housing.
Yes.
Which affordable means many different things to many different people. How do you feel about Silt being potentially on the leading edge of affordable housing?
I think it is good. That's one of the things that we spent many, many months before we moved down here, looking at what was available and what the pricing was. And I believe Silt is, as you said, kind of right on that edge. But I believe if, I believe the housing market may drop a little bit in pricing, which may benefit Silt, or it could work against us. I think that one of the things that needs to happen in a lot of communities is there has to be a push for more affordable housing, but it has to be affordable. It can't be saying we're gonna have affordable housing and yet still having it six of $700,000. Needs to be more in the range of, say, $300,000 to $400,000. But at the same time, then you need to be able to bring in loan companies, loan officers, that will be able to put in, try and push programs into the community so people can buy.
And then my last question would be, a lot or some of our citizens rely on energy production for their livelihood.
Yes.
Do you have a stance on that particular issue?
No, I really don't, because the way, I guess I'm gonna say, I think we need to move into more sustainable things like solar and wind and stuff. But we can't stop producing energy because there's other things that energy brings. Medical, just us sitting here having the computers, plastics, that's, it's, you know, the thing we need to look at on, I guess, is regulation is, again, going back to what is safe and what is good for the community.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any further questions? All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Todd Tibbetts. Good evening.
Howdy.
Hi. Just wanna start off a little bit about yourself, just like the.
Yeah, I'm Todd Tibbetts, live at 439 Orchard. Married and been a homeowner in Silt for the past 27 years. I like this community and would like to continue to see Silt grow and maintain the things I enjoy about it. I've been out, I was on the board and P&amp;Z for about 10 years back in the early 2000s. But I've been out for a number of years because of business travel and other commitments. I'm now working part-time, so I don't travel, so I've got the time to commit to the board and community service. My college degree was in construction management. And my work has been in the wholesale lumber business, so I'm pretty familiar with construction standards. While I was on the board, we approved developments like the Stillwater Development, Iron Horse Mesa, Mesa View, Painted Pastures, Camarillo, and some of the other developments. So while I know that things have changed quite a bit in Silt over the last 10, 15 years, I am pretty familiar with P&amp;Z structure and other issues that revolve around the responsibilities of being on that board.
I know you were on the board before, and now have you seen Silt in a positive growing method? Or kind of, what is your opinion on how it's growing? Is it going, is it positive to you, or?
Yeah, there have been a significant number of improvements around town. The sidewalk infrastructure has been improved dramatically, both for people being able to walk around town and also kids get around on bikes and other people get around on bikes. You know, we've had a number of different housing developments. Some, I think, have, you know, had, I see some issues with some of the developments that have come in, but all in all, I think that most of the developments that have come in have fit well into the community. I look at the developments that the board approved while I was on the board, and I think that they've been pretty fitting. You know, Stillwater never came to fruition, but I think it was a good positive for the town to go through that whole process, so it really helped set the tone for other developments. So, you know, there've been a lot of great improvements in the community, and I'd like to see that trend continue.
I guess I have the same question as last time, just because you were on the board and P&amp;Z prior. How do you feel about the town's code? Do you feel it's okay? Do you feel that there needs to be a lot changed, or?
Well, in general, I think the codes are good. I was pleased to hear about the code enforcement officer being added to the town staff. I think that's essential, because I think one of the biggest issues has been that because of staffing and other issues, there has been a lack of enforcement. I mean, any code, you know, most of the codes were probably written back in the early 2000s when development was a big issue. I mean, Silt was growing 50 to 75 housing starts a year for about a four-year stretch. We were a community that was under, you know, around 2,000 or so, 2,300 people, and it was projected in five years to be at 5,000. So there was a significant amount of pressure on that for infrastructure as well. So, but I think all in all, Silt has grown at a good pace and there've been some very positive improvements in the community.
Thank you.
Building upon this last answer, you also mentioned that you'd like to maintain the things you like about Silt. Can you expand on some of those items specifically?
Well, just, you know, this is a town that, you know, current population is under 4,000. I don't have the exact statistics, but you know, that's a good-sized community. You know, I can appreciate the fact that all populations tend to grow, but I think that Silt as a smaller community is a good thing. I like all the parks that we have. We've got a good mixture of different parks in the community. Again, there's been a lot of improvements on the ability for pedestrians and bicyclists to get around town. So, you know, it's easy to go from one park to another. You know, we are close to both Rifle and Glenwood Springs and Grand Junction for shopping and those types of things. So, and then we've got a wide bevy of recreational amenities that are available very close to us. My wife and I manage the cross-country ski trail system up on the Buford Road and, you know, Town of Silt supports it, other communities support it. So, I mean, those are the type of things that I appreciate about Silt, and I know other people that I talk to do, and it's something that I feel it's the responsibility of our town government to try their best to maintain.
Do you have an idea of what affordable housing should look like, or any opinion on that?
Well, the reality is being able to build a 2,500-square-foot house on, you know, a 7,000-foot lot is out of reach for just about everybody at this juncture. So, you know, multifamily and smaller-size units is gonna be the reality. And that's a change, I guess, for Silt. A lot of the emphasis has been on multifamily. And, you know, that, those types of facilities can also fit into a community. But I don't necessarily think that multifamily is good in every part of the community. I mean, there, we're in a neighborhood that is a mix of R1 and R2, that historically has been single-family residences. And there are a lot of pockets in Silt that are like that. And I think those areas should be preserved as best we can as we try and figure out how to build more housing units that really are able to fit in people's financial budgets. I mean, that's a major challenge, I think, in every community.
I have a question.
No, I'm good.
Are there any development approvals that you gave during your prior tenure that you would want to revisit based on, you know, hindsight being 2020? Are there any things that happened since then where you think, oh, I wish I had asked, or I wish I knew?
You know, as I look at how they've been built out, Iron Horse Mesa was always quite an enigma. The Phase 1 and how Phase 1 is built out, I think, has built out properly. But the phases that were approved after Phase 1, which haven't come to fruition, I was concerned about. But, you know, the challenge on a lot of the developments was they were up on the mesas, and so you had geographic restrictions. Stony Ridge, I think, is now Grandview. I think that development has built out very nicely. You know, there's, that has gone through the different phases and has come out real well. I'm still kind of seeing where Painted Pastures is. We had anticipated that Painted Pastures would have built their multi-housing, which would have been on the north side of 61st, or as more of the units, the single-family units were developed, and that didn't happen. It ended up that the multifamily came across the street, and that looks like a very positive development there. Not sure what's gonna happen when Phase 2 and Phase 3 start coming to fruition in Painted Pastures. I think that the benefit that Silt has had over the last 10, 15 years is development slowed down considerably, because the pace of development from 2000 to 2007 was very challenging for any community to handle. And I think the pace now of housing development through the last recession has really come back to a more manageable pace, both for the boards and for the staff that has to deal with all this.
Thank you.
I've got the same question about the oil and gas development being livelihoods of some of our citizens. Do you support that, are you against that?
Well, I feel that oil and gas is obviously an essential part of our community, and the product that they produce is important for everybody's vitality. You know, as long as the organizations, the companies that are doing the work are following the standards that the State of Colorado has provided, I don't see any problem with that. It's kind of a moot point, though, for P&amp;Z, as the Town of Silt has already leased her mineral rights, and there's a path that was approved already, so I don't think it's an issue that's gonna be brought before P&amp;Z.
Something annexed that could potentially bring some issues up, yeah. And then what businesses would you like to see, or would you like to see businesses develop in Silt?
Well, you know, I guess at P&amp;Z, we don't really have a choice to pick and choose what applications come before us. You know, any community would, I mean, since my wife and I moved in here in '96, we've wanted to get a grocery store. You know, Silt has had a few opportunities to put a grocery store in, but that has proved elusive. And simply because of the challenges. The previous gentleman mentioned that there's a tractor business similar to Tractor Supply in Leadville. I don't know the population of Leadville, but I would imagine it's a lot larger than Silt. And we used to have the Tim's Tools Hardware Store, and that's gone. So, you know, the reality is, you know, this is a small population center, and we're close to Rifle, which has a lot of the retail establishments. So it's always gonna be a challenge, but to me, whatever business comes to apply, if they meet the standards of the community and the building, you know, it's to the benefit of everybody to support that activity.
Okay. All right. I've got nothing further. All right. Thanks, Todd. Next up will be Rick Newell. Evening, sir.
Evening.
Just wanna start off a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, my name is Richard Newell, I go by Rick Newell. I moved to Silt in 2007, so I've been here 17 years. I live in Mesa View Estates. I have an honors degree in electrical engineering. I have a license in healthcare, and I have a real estate license. I have owned two businesses so far in my life. I owned my first business in San Francisco, and it was called Aurora Painting and Decorating. We used to restore Queen Anne Victorians and restore those beautiful painted ladies back to beautiful, pristine shape. Unfortunately, I was playing racquetball. Some gentleman was talking. I was playing racquetball. Some gentleman was talking about racquetball and I had a full rupture in my Achilles tendon. So, obviously, my physical labor days were over for at least a year. So, I had to figure out what I was going to do and I went back to school. I almost had a degree in psychology, but those were the days of the Vietnam War and stuff and I didn't quite finish that degree, but I did go back and I got an honors degree in electrical engineering. When I got to Silt, I ended up being the project manager of Iron Horse Mesa. And it was a wonderful project and I was very excited and we got everything just about where we needed to be. I couldn't get the builder to start building models as fast as I wanted to, but we finally were almost there. And you know what happened in '08 and '09. So, that was very disappointing for me, but, you know, it happens. So, I also had a second business that I ran, which was called Vital Life Systems. And Vital Life Systems was a water-based technology company, and I feel very strongly about clean, pure, safe water. And so, what I did was I started looking at technologies and I found what was called AquaCore, which is an ultrafiltration membrane-based technology. It's wonderful. It's better than the micro, you know, filtration we have at our plant here. So, what I did was I put together a package, which basically was a portable water plant, so that you could have a water plant in your home. And so, we became the western-area distributors for AquaCore. And that went pretty well for a while. The same issues started happening, though, with the crashes that were happening and the businesses suffering and the economy suffering. I took that as far as I could and then I disbanded the company. I would call my real career was in high-tech. The last position that I had in high-tech, I was the program management lead for IO subsystems Engineering for Sun Microsystems. And in that capacity, I ended up running five concurrent cross-company worldwide teams, and I did a lot of supplier management and vendor management, and I was the team leader for five teams that were releasing, developing, researching products for Sun Microsystems. And that was very intense. That was very intense. It was a $400-million-business unit that I was in charge of. So, I was a senior product program manager and a senior product engineer. And I finally left that behind when I got burned out with the whole thing because tech started going dark and I didn't like the directions that I saw going. So, I retired years ago and I loved living in Silt. I've lived in San Jose. I've lived in San Francisco. I used to live in Rock Creek. I watched my house almost burned down, what, two or three Christmases ago when Rock Creek burned. It was horrible to watch. But anyway, my wife and I moved out here and we love Silt. I live in Mesa View Estates and it's such a wonderful little neighborhood. Everyone's friendly. It's quiet. It's safe. And I know Rob Doty. I'm the lead for the HOA Design Review Committee for Mesa View Estates and Rob's on the committee with me. And he suggested that I look into the P&amp;Z because I have a very strong business background and a lot of other experiences that he thought might be applicable to joining the team, so.
All right. Thank you for that.
What is your vision or what are you thinking down the road? That's one of our big concerns is affordable housing. What would you, where would you start to help push?
Well, right away, if anybody's been watching what's going on, there's a huge correction coming. There's a huge correction coming. So, affordable housing, what is going to be a $500,000 home today may easily be a $250,000 home within the year. I seriously believe that. I'm not, I'm for people being able to own a home. And even though I have a real estate license and, you know, I was in charge of Iron Horse Mesa and I was with Sotheby's and I did a lot of things after I quit tech, I think that prices have gone way too high. I think things have gotten obscene, to be quite honest with you. And it's gotten to where people that are hardworking and really care and want a home, they can't afford them anymore. So, I'm all for affordable homes, but I also believe that we are going to see a major correction coming. It's already hitting the commercial market so hard and the residential's right behind it.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Chris Clausen.
I'll ask the same question. How do you feel about the town's code? Is it too strict or not strict enough or just right?
I think it's pretty much just right. I mean, you know, we have to refer a lot of our, you know, Mesa View family members through our doc. We're trying to rewrite our documentation and there's a lot of stuff going on. It's just so, you know, old and but as much as I see and as much as people see, I think the codes are pretty well done right now. I don't want to see too much restriction. You know, people want to be free and they want to enjoy their lives. And there's always that balance between revenue and development and growth, but the people's, you know, personal satisfaction. And I think Silt is pretty well balancing all of that. I've never felt restricted living here for seventeen years by any code or any kind of enforcement, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a little bit of a comment that you may build upon and make your own comment. Within the times that I started working for the Town of Silt, we have enacted a plan and we have acted upon that plan. And us as a board like to see a project from beginning to end. And I can attest that we have operators within our board that not only acknowledge that fact, but they are also doers. They'll begin that plan and they'll see it all the way through. With that being said, the code for us, it is something that we, from codes that have been enacted from 1980 to now, we do feel that it does need some revision. So, we are not a stern board that feel that something that was enacted twenty years ago needs to be what it is today. So, we are very open-minded about analyzing what's in the population now and what the population needs are. To finalize that comment, I've heard many of the projects you have stated, you have started some of what you have seen beginning to end. What would you say is the common denominator within starting or finishing a project? Either an answer or a comment on what I had to say. It's acceptable.
Yeah. As a senior program, I don't know if anyone else has been a program manager, but it's interesting. You need a very careful plan. And I had to lay out plans for all my projects and all my product releases. And if you do your planning and your research correctly and you lay that out very well and then you implement it, you get to the end. And I can tell you, I was very results-driven. We were deliverables-driven in high-tech. That meant if it took an eighty-hour week, that's what you did because you had to meet your deadlines. You had to meet your deliverables. And that means very, very careful planning and implementation. And I'm very good at that.
Do you think?
I had one of the best release-on-schedule records in Sun Microsystems because of very, very careful planning and very careful focus on detail.
What's your opinion on plan versus vision? Which one comes first and which one is more effective?
Well, you have to have a vision. You have to know where it is you want to go before you go there, before you figure out how you're going to go there.
So, do you think those two work alongside? One supersedes the other?
They can and they cannot. You may have a vision that never gets implemented, ever. You may have a vision that does get implemented, so.
Okay. I just wanted to have an open-ended question and that to get some open feedback on yourself.
Thank you.
I have a similar question to what I asked Todd before. As a long-term resident, are there any commercial or residential developments during your time here as a resident that you were opposed to or not a fan of and why?
Not really. I would like to, like everyone else, I would have liked to have seen a grocery store at some point appear here. But I understand we're a very small population, you know, and the store has to be able to be viable and be a success. And I don't know if we ever had enough mass for that to happen. And we do live close to Newcastle and to Rifle. I am watching the water plant, you know, because I am interested in water technologies and I did a lot of research and work in that. And I'm just watching the growth that's going on and then watching the issues with the water plant. And, you know, there's that balance. We're also, you know, contained. But, yeah, I'm just, I'm very happy with the improvements I've seen. I think the last, what, three or four years, we've seen a lot of improvements in Silt. Main Street looks so much nicer. The businesses coming in. I would like to say I don't want to see a third-dollar store in Silt.
I agree.
Just to put a little levity, not a third-dollar store in Silt.
Okay. I've got nothing.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you so much for your consideration.
And next up, we have Dana Wood.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm Dana Wood. I just moved to Silt five days ago. I've lived in this valley in Garfield County since 2011. And homeowner, homeownership has never really been an option for me until the River Run Homes were built. And so, I'm really excited to be there and to be living in a smaller community. I moved from Glenwood and Glenwood is too big for me. So, I'm excited to be in a smaller, tight-knit community. I do work from home for a statewide nonprofit called The Colorado Blueprint to End Hunger. I am also a board member for High Water Farm here in Silt over at the Silt River Preserve. I'm a runner, trail runner. I love to travel. I'm a yoga teacher and I'm excited to get involved more in this community.
All right.
In one of your questions, I guess it says, "Improving land use policies for eco-friendly affordable housing and sustainable agricultural use." Can you kind of expand on that a little bit? What you really, what you really mean by that?
Sure. I think affordable housing, we've been talking a lot about that today, is smart growth. So, how are we utilizing existing infrastructure that's already in place here in Silt? And also, how can we couple that with creating some mini ecosystems that do focus on growing our own food and keeping agriculture alive in Silt and being able to feed our own communities? So, how do we get creative with that? I think the River Run Homes are a really great example of what Silt can pioneer as far as affordable housing and smart land use. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I was going to change up my question and ask what attracted you to Silt, but now I know. And I was going to ask the affordable housing question. You kind of touched on that. So, I guess I'll go back to, how do you feel about the code? I mean, obviously, you served some time in Rifle and everything. So, how do you feel about codes in general? Do you feel that there's, I'm sure there's always room for improvement, but how do you feel about how they pertain to Silt?
I don't know enough yet about Silt's code, but I do know with the rapid growth and folks being attracted to this community because it is more affordable and it is smaller, the ability to be flexible. And I'm happy to hear that all of you are open-minded in hearing changes to code, making sure that it's equitable for the businesses and developers that are coming in. So, just having that open-mindedness and being able to listen to community and make sure that any of those changes can be made to code to really support the growth that this community is facing right now.
Thank you.
How do you feel you could very effectively apply your past experience with the P&amp;Z and Commissioner down in Rifle within the P&amp;Z here in Silt?
Sure. I was a city councillor and planning and zoning commissioner in Rifle from 2015 to 2017. So, right when the new water treatment facility was being built in Rifle. And I see that on the cusp of what is going to be needed here in Silt. So, I think bringing some of that background, you know, just how we engage with citizens and, you know, really figure out the best path forward for Silt. What's affordable? What works? You know, what's cost-effective because a new water treatment facility costs money? And taxpayers will most likely need to pay for that. So, how are we having community members at the table and helping us co-create those solutions? So, I think that's the biggest thing that I can bring. Also, just in my professional background, looking at how municipalities are changing some land use codes to better support agriculture and farming and really making farming a possibility for younger generations to purchase or lease land. So, I would love that opportunity to share some of that.
Thank you, Dana.
Excuse me. Could you give some examples of we, the community, the town could, that would apply to code that would help urban farming for like River Run, per se, or for other residential areas?
I can give an example. So, High Water Farm is on a conservation land easement. And I think that public-private partnership between the Town of Silt and the River Preserve, which is through Aspen Valley Land Trust, is a really incredible example of how farming can come into a community. I think there's lots of opportunity. I don't know how many folks have put their own land in Silt in conservation easement, but I've seen that work, not just in this community, but in other communities. I know that land leasing is also something that Jefferson County has looked at, Pitt King County has looked at. I'm not really a fan of land leasing. I would rather it be owned by someone. But it is also another option, given that land is really expensive.
Is there like some changes to code that would, you would think residents would start doing more gardening, greenhouses that, you know, that would help them out, per se?
I think so. When I lived in Rifle, they had just changed the code so that you could have chickens. I don't know what that is like in Silt. Maybe some neighborhoods have that. Maybe some don't. But I think looking at some code changes to allow for gardening plots or, you know, changing up the front so that it's not just Kentucky bluegrass. Yeah.
You guys stole all my questions, but by way of transparency, I was the one who mentioned the opening on the P&amp;Z board.
Yes, I do know Derek.
We've been together on the Hearst Leadership Forum. That's been going on the last month or two. And another now board member on P&amp;Z, that conversation started about chickens. So, there you have it. That's the thread that binds.
I had chickens when I lived in Rifle and I miss them dearly. It was amazing. I had a greenhouse. I had chickens.
There's someone on P&amp;Z that shares your desire for chickens.
Yeah. I think, yeah, there's just a lot of neat things that Silt could really lead the way in. And also getting a grocery store, like everyone else mentioned. I think that that is a necessary at this point.
All right. So, we've all touched on the affordable housing, but you went as far as doing eco-friendly affordable housing. From everything I've seen, eco-friendly means expensive, which doesn't mean affordable. So, what would you, what, are there code changes that would make eco-friendly more affordable?
I mean, I'm going to keep going to my own-house example. There's no, nothing against natural gas, but I have no natural gas that goes to my house. Everything is electric. I'm on a shared water tap with ten other houses. So, and I think if you are a couple or a single person living in a six-to-seven-hundred-square-foot home is not out of the question. So, I think being proactive and more of the River Run-type developments. I don't like the land lease piece of it, but I think similar developments around Silt could happen. I don't like the land lease piece of it, but I think similar developments around Silt could happen. And yeah, Silt is where I could afford. So this is where I'm at. And I'm happy to be here.
All right. I've got no further questions. Anybody else?
No, I just want to thank all of you for, for applying. This is great. We have, you know, four people, you know, so thank you all.
And that, that's great. Keep an eye on PNC openings, board openings. We want citizens to come in and we want you to be part of the decisions. And, you know, places open up, so keep an eye on those. Today we are, there is one vacancy.
One vacancy.
But I just want to say we have very great people applying and yeah, it's going to be a difficult decision.
I just, that's, usually these vacancies are pretty easy to fill because you have one person in one seat. So everyone goes home a winner.
Yes.
This, I don't know the last time we've had more than one person apply for an open seat in the 12 years I've been up here, so.
It's a lot of two, but to have four for one.
Four for one, so it's great, yeah, that this many people are getting interested, so.
Yeah, and, and you have the, you know, I, I see merits from, from both sides. You know, the people who've been here for a long time, I see those merits. And the newcomers, you know, just for the fact that they're interested in this town, they want to be a part of it. So I see merits, you know, to, to both.
Have experience and backgrounds and, yeah. Well, whenever mayor, we can start the discussion.
Yeah, if there wants to be a discussion or someone just wants to throw a name up and see if he gets a second or however we want to proceed.
Okay, I, I would like to make a motion to appoint Todd Tibbetts. And the reason why I would like to appoint him is that he demonstrated lots of critical thinking. He was analytical in how he made his responses. And he gave responses from different perspectives, giving solutions to specific problems. And I thought that he had a lot of like growth focus. So if he, yeah, that's the reason why I would appoint, appoint him.
I'll, I'll second that.
I'll second that one. Okay. All right. Then we have a motion by trustee Poston to appoint Todd Tibbetts to the vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission. That was seconded by trustee Clausen. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails five to two.
Well, I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dana Wood to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion by trustee Clausen to appoint Dana Wood to the Planning and Zoning vacancy. That was seconded by trustee, or Mayor Protam, hand to hand. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Let's go do a roll call vote on that one. So Sheila, if you would, please.
Trustee Seaford?
Aye.
Trustee Poston?
Nay.
Trustee Flores?
Nay.
Trustee Clausen?
Aye.
Trustee Brettinall?
Aye.
Protam Hanahan?
Aye.
Mayor Reichel?
Aye.
Passes five to two.
Passes five to two.
Yes.
Congratulations, Dana.
And then I want to say welcome. I just have strong recommendations for Mr., Mr. Todd.
I just wanted to thank every, all the.
Great applicants.
All the applicants. It was nice to have a mix of new and old.
Thank you all.
As far as citizens and whatnot.
Agreed, yes.
Welcome, Dana.
Well, thank you.
I will be in touch with Ms. Wood tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Night.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the Garfield Clean Energy Clear presentation and 2024 budget request with Morgan Hill. And I will turn it over to Administrator Lehman.
Perfect. Come on up. I'll let you guys pick it up.
All right. And do we, do we have our presentation?
It should be right behind there. How's that? Oh, maybe not.
I don't think so. It was not in the packet.
It was not in the packet.
I do have my computer if we want to try to hook it up.
Did you send that to Sheila?
I think I did. And I also was, there was some wonky formatting stuff because I only have Google on my computer, but I tried to turn it into a PowerPoint.
See if she can find it real quick. Yeah, because there's nothing in the packet, just.
Yeah. If not, maybe our AV guy can help us out because I am no help.
We can, we can talk through it, but it is, it is nice to have the visuals.
Of course. Yeah, you spent the time to prepare it.
You should be able to connect to the Zoom from your laptop and then you can just share it via Google from there.
Yeah.
Such a nerd.
All I have is the cover letter that, from you, Morgan.
Okay.
That's all I have from you as an attachment.
The file size is.
Do you have the Zoom link?
Um, I don't know that I do.
On the homepage of the website.
Okay, great. Sorry for this lead time.
It's all right.
It's like intermission.
Popcorn.
So go to the lobby.
Would it have come from someone else, Morgan?
Somewhere, right?
What's that?
Would that PowerPoint have come from someone else besides yourself?
No, I don't think so. It's welcome with a capital W exclamation point at the end.
Thank you. I forgot what it was.
Um, okay.
Countasilt.org.
And I should be there already. I'm just getting back to it.
Just right on the homepage.
Great.
Make you a host so you can do that. Will you make sure you mute the computer so we don't end up seeing back?
Yep. And I'll turn the mic off as well.
That's, yes.
Stay muted. Okay. Once I get that access, I'll share my screen or. Maybe, maybe don't let me do it now.
Try it now, see if you have it.
Okay. Yeah, I think I can. Let me separate out the presentation into its own page. Okay. That's why we always have backups.
Good job on the press this fast.
Except for now, I'm not going to know which one that is. I'll exit out of the intro again. Okay, Zoom.
I don't think she's a host yet. I'm not a host, so I can't promote her as a host if, when it's trade, if you're willing to.
Okay. Yeah, it says open system preferences.
Nope, I can't. Amy or Sheila will have to make him a host, I believe. Okay.
I made it where participants could share their screen.
Okay.
All right, we'll try one more time.
Thank you, Amy.
Oh, this is my own. I've shared my screen before on.
Zoom wants my permissions, probably.
Yeah. And actually, we used Martine's the last time. And maybe it's just M. Hill. It's like you walk into the computer. Because of the, being recorded. Okay. Would it help too if I tried to just email it to Sheila again?
Yeah.
Sure.
Try that real quick, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great. I'll watch for it.
Okay.
I was just checking. I didn't, I don't have it.
Sometimes the PDF file is actually even bigger. So Sheila, I'm just going to send you a link to the Google file or the Drive link. And usually, even if you don't have, usually you're able to actually open that. So if you can, give it a try. And if not, I'll keep messing with my sharing permissions.
Okay.
Isn't this your department, Derek?
Sometimes. You have it open on your screen in your browser. And when you try and share it via Zoom, what happens?
I think it's something on my computer that isn't allowing it, like it's a sharing preference on, or sharing permission on my computer that isn't allowing, it's not, it's not on your end as I.
A piece of fruit on.
You're logged in as you or you're logged in as guest on your machine?
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Never mind.
That was easiest. Got it. All right. Sorry about that. And then you should be able to just hit slideshow.
And Sheila. Sheila saved the day.
Yep. Yay.
The small victories.
Great. Well, after all that, um, so my name's Morgan Hill. I'm the Associate Director at CLEAR, Clean Energy Economy for the Region. And CLEAR operates under a contract with Garfield Clean Energy to operate their programs and services. So that's why we're with CLEAR but representing GCE tonight.
And my name is Christina Matzel and I'm a Clean Energy Program Associate with CLEAR.
All right, next slide. Which I think that's her, is Sheila, are you able to advance that?
I'm trying.
There we go. Thank you. All right. So a little bit of background on Garfield Clean Energy. We are, there are nine-member governments as part of GCE. And this includes all of the municipalities in Garfield County and the county itself, as well as Colorado Mountain College, the Rankford Transportation Authority, and actually Holy Cross Energy is an affiliate member. And this, this partnership is really a remarkable collaboration between all of the, all of the communities who come together for bimonthly meetings and try to advance the goals of GCE and really pooling all of the resources of these different communities. I, I kind of use the saying stronger together. And that, you know, by Garfield County contributing what they do, and again, all of the, all of the municipalities and governments contributing, we're able to leverage those resources to accomplish a lot for our clean energy programs that we'll talk about. GCE has been around in its current form, oh, sorry, back, back to that last slide. GCE has been around in its current form since 2012, so we just hit 10 years last year. But we actually started in 2009 as, as an advisory board. So this work has been in progress for a long time and we've accomplished a lot in that time. And the Town of Silt was a founding GCE, GCE member back when we incorporated as a government collaborative back in 2012. And part of that reason for the government collaborative is it allows us to go for some funding opportunities that are only eligible, or that government entities are only eligible for. And like I mentioned, Clean Energy Economy for the Region manages the programs under the contract with Garfield Clean Energy. All right, now next slide. So our vision for GCE is that we will be an innovative leader in advancing energy efficiency, renewable energy and clean transportation to protect the environment and build a strong, resilient and diverse economy. And this is a picture of the GCE board and some CLEAR staff in front of a solar array up at CMC that we were part of, of helping to get installed. And I think one thing about this statement too that's important is that, you know, we really do, when we advance, we'll talk about energy efficiency and its benefits, but this really is a direct benefit to the residents of Garfield County in saving them money on their energy bills and providing this locally-produced clean energy and renewable energy, and then also some of our clean transportation projects. And then we're able to also focus on economic development through that. So I started to touch on this a little bit, but through our energy efficiency program, we save homes, businesses and governments money on their energy expenses. So we'll talk about the Reenergize program that saves residents money. We also do commercial energy efficiency work. And then Christina will talk about the work that we're doing with the Town of Silt to monitor energy on your government buildings. We focus on locally-produced clean energy. And a lot of what that is around here is solar. We do have a geothermal grant in the works as well. So even though some of our utility providers do have wind as part of their renewable energy mix, a lot of the energy that we're able to produce here is solar. And then clean mobility and transportation and economic benefits and economic diversification because there are a lot of jobs in the clean energy sector. And we're trying to actually help make sure that we are creating training opportunities for people who want to work in that field as well. This is kind of similar information. Other than we'll also talk, this is kind of a recap slide. We'll talk at the end about the Garfield Energy Action Plan update as well. All right. And Christina, you want to talk about Reenergize?
So the Reenergize program is a program that we developed and is funded by the GCE partnership. There are a federal program and a state program for weatherization assistance and helping with affordable energy in people's homes. And we were able to develop this program for residents of Garfield County, which allows people who make a little bit more, up to 150% of the area median income, as opposed to the state, the next program is the state program. And to qualify for that program, you have to make 80% or less of the area median income. So we're able to reach a lot more people throughout the county and help improve the comfort in their home and in many cases, reduce their energy bills in the winter. So the slide here is just the, the results and who we've been able, how many people we've been able to sign up over the last two years so far. For Silt, we've been able to qualify just for our Reenergize program, 17 residents. So that doesn't include any residents who have qualified for the state program, which is CARE, Colorado Affordable. Residential energy.
You've said it enough times.
And the federal program is weatherization assistance. So for 2002 to 2022, we were able to spend $10,000 in Silt on, on residents' homes here and doing things like adding insulation. And, and that's the biggest one generally, but, which is able to reduce their bills in the winter and in many cases in the summer as well. And so far this year, we've been able to allocate $21,000 to residents of Silt. And with all of these upgrades that the program has been able to make, we are saving an estimated $4,700 for the residents per year, just on energy bills.
And one thing to also highlight, Christina was talking about the CARE and WAP, that those state and federal programs. We do a lot of marketing and outreach for the Reenergize program. And so when we put ads in the paper, we have boosted posts on social media about our programs. It drives traffic to our website and to just calling CLEAR staff. And we're then able to refer more residents to those state and federal programs as well. So it really kind of generates more energy savings for, for the whole community beyond just what Reenergize itself funds.
Yes. And then you can go to the next slide. So just a little anecdote on one of the homes that we've been able to help, which is really similar to a lot of homes in the area. This home was a small 1960s home, and their winter electric bills were $300 a month in the winter. There, like most of the homes, we're seeing identified poor insulation. And we were able to, through this program, we work with Northwest Colorado Council of Governments, and they come in and they do the work. They also do the work for the state and the federal programs as well. But they identified poor insulation and were able to bring that. I believe that home was below the current code, so they were able to bring that up to code. And the homeowners immediately noticed a difference in the comfort level of their house, which is big, and not to mention the savings that they received on their energy bills. So for these programs, anybody who's interested in applying or seeing if they qualify can reach out to us. You can go to the Garfield Clean Energy website. And through our residential, we have a residential page, and we have a page for the Re-Energize Program. And we can help see where people qualify.
And the Re-Energize Program, it actually, we have a ton of interest in it, and we end up allocating all the funds. So we, which we think is kind of a good problem to have, actually, that we, there's a high demand for the service that we offer. And we are always trying to identify new sources of funding, working on grants and other sustainable funding sources through the years. So kind of throwing that number up there just reminded me that, you know, we wanna say that there's, there's a really, a lot of interest in this program. And folks should reach out to us, even if we are, towards the end of the year, we do end up getting a waitlist, because we'll put them on the waitlist for the following year. And we really do try to serve everyone who reaches out to us. So definitely, if you hear of anyone who says, hey, you know, I think, A, my energy bills are really high, or I might wanna put in a new piece of equipment that's more energy efficient, if it's something that we cover, we would love to talk with them.
And on staff, we do have a native Spanish speaker, and we have Spanish applications as well. So we're able to reach as many of the residents locally as possible. So then, we also have our Advanced Energy Management Program. Formerly, this was the Building Energy Navigator. Through this program, we use monthly bills for all of the government buildings that communities want to track. And we also have several buildings that we have a device in that tracks the actual energy use of that building 24/7 on a 15-minute interval. So over the last year and a half, we've been working on transitioning from the Building Energy Navigator Program to this new program. And the image here is a dashboard, just a picture of, of where Silt is in our system right now. And so we're able to look at trends and see energy use, electric and natural gas energy use, and what that looks like for the town. And we're able to develop reports and share those as well. So the image here, I can see from the, the bar graph on the bottom there that the, which is the energy use intensity. That's all of the energy use normalized for weather. I can see that Silt is actually on a downward trend from 2021 to 2022. The reason 2020, 23 isn't in here on, on this page is that we've been working on making some updates to the data that is going in the system. But generally, it's, it's gonna be reflective of what we see here. And for Silt, we are tracking the Town Hall, the Water Treatment Plant, and the Waste Water Treatment Plant. And all three of those buildings also have the interval data on them as well. Go to the next slide.
Is this, sorry, is the Silt senior housing a part of, part of this?
It is not right now. I guess I've taken over the program from predecessors. Was that part of what we were tracking before?
I don't remember. I just know there's, wasn't there solar panels on senior housing at one time?
They're still up there.
Oh, okay.
But I don't know if it was ever monitored.
Oh, okay, got you. Yeah, I was just curious.
No, that's alright.
Well, and we actually are, even if we're not tracking through this Advanced Energy Management Program, because actually those devices that track energy use, they're, you know, we have to maintain them, and they're expensive, expensive to purchase. So we're not putting them on a lot of different locations.
Okay, got you.
But we are, as part of our programs this year for that renewable energy work, Christina and another staff member at CLEAR are doing an analysis of the amount of solar energy being produced around the county to help us understand kind of where we're at in meeting some of those goals. So we are looking at that on a broader scale.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like I said, we're the, we track the utility bills. And for Silt, it's the Town Hall and the Water Treatment Plants. We are doing, like she said, a deep dive into the solar data. And this is helping us also, for each municipality that has solar, verify the actual production that's, that the, the panels are doing and make sure that the utility is compensating you adequate or correctly. We've actually found out in some cases that there were some mistakes going on, and generally, those have been in favor of the utility. So it's been a really big project that we've been working on. And Silt has a significant amount of solar, so there, so we're taking a look at all of that as well. Through this process, we're also setting up all of the town buildings that we're tracking in Portfolio Manager, which is the state benchmarking, benchmarking program. So generally, for buildings right now, the states requiring buildings that are over 50,000 square feet be submitted into Portfolio Manager for benchmarking and tracking. And Silt buildings don't have to be in there quite yet, but we've already got them in there. So when the state starts requiring that smaller buildings are tracked, we'll have it all ready. And also with these, with this tracking, you're able to get an energy star, star score for the building. And we anticipate that because of the solar here, that the Town Hall especially will have a really high energy star score due to the solar, and that this building is really efficient. And then the next slide. So the interval data that we've been tracking, this is a kind of a little picture of what our new program looks like. If anybody had been into, in the Energy Navigator, Building Navigator Program, it looked fairly similar, a little more bright colors. So what we do for this program is we combine the utility bills and this interval data to really verify that everything's tracking well, that we're tracking the right numbers, and that the utility doesn't have anything that's really crazy and off. So the, the image here, we're able to put in an occupancy schedule, really see when the buildings are shut down, which, when it comes to energy savings, that's the easiest place to save money in a building is overnight, when things should be off. So we can mark that out. We're able to watch that, the current electric use on that 15-minute interval data. And we're also able to look in here at the temperatures throughout the day. We're connected through this system to the local weather station. So it gives the data that's right here for Silt. And then in that picture, there's that orange line, that's a base load. We're able to set an optimum base load for each of the buildings. And that's, sometimes that's a goal to reach, and sometimes the building is doing really good. And we just wanna make sure that we're seeing it when it's unoccupied, get to that line. Next slide. So with the 15-minute data, we, the image here is the, the Water Treatment Plant. And so we're also able to see the solar data, the solar production. And we can see here that the Water Treatment Plant, with all of that solar, is, the, the building's using quite a bit of energy, but a lot of it is offset by the solar that's being produced. And then with these, we can verify monthly, we'll go in and verify the data here with the utility bill. We're also able to see if anything spikes, if there's, you know, something running at a, overnight when it shouldn't be. And we can reach out and notify and connect with facility managers. And then we have reached the point where we are starting to reach out to facility managers and to set up reports on a basis that they would appreciate to see how they're doing every month. Next slide. And so like our residential program where we provide Re-Energize, we do have a commercial program. And this program, we provide free energy consulting services to businesses and any commercial property that is interested in knowing what they could do better in their building to save some money. And we, our building specialist will come and perform a detailed walkthrough and provide a report on measures that could be taken. We, your new planning and zoning mentioned, and I guess the big topic of conversation was affordable housing. We have worked with, in rifle with Habitat for Humanity at the Waupidi Commons Development. And that is a development that's going in and, is it trying to be net zero or the?
I think they're all-electric.
All-electric, very efficient. And our building specialist has worked along that process with Habitat Humanity as well. So anything like that, you know, always welcome referrals for businesses interested in learning about their, how they can save as well.
And, and just to emphasize that a lot of, it, it's so much easier to implement some of these energy savings measures on the front end versus after homes and commercial properties have already been built. So we love it when even a remodel project reaches out to us. We're, we've been doing some consulting on a hotel conversion to employee housing, so that as that property gets developed, they have the best information on how to do that efficiently, which is gonna save them and their, their tenants' money. Alright, next slide. So for our clean transportation programs, this is one way that contributing to Garfield Clean Energy really helps to lever, leverage resources that help Garfield County as well as a broader region. Because the staff that work for CLEAR, some of their work is funded by GCE, and then some of it is funded by other state and federal grants. So Martine, who is our bilingual staff person in the middle there, he is also the recharge coach for a Northwest County region of 14, or Northwest Colorado region of 14 counties. And that provides coaching to communities who are interested in getting EV charging stations installed and making sure that they know about grants and other funding opportunities, and what they need to do to get that station put in, as far as the electric conduit and those kinds of things. And we've also been working to identify charging deserts, because if someone's gonna own an EV, they need to know that they're not gonna have to go, you know, a couple hundred miles without being able to charge it, or being able to have a, a station that maybe is a fast charging station, so that they don't have to be held up on their trip for too long. And then we're also working with the Charge Ahead Colorado Program and EV Fast Charging Plazas. So we have a lot of communities in Garfield County, pretty much all of them except Carbondale, and that's also a major transportation corridor, really on Highway 82. But you are, you know, an interstate transportation corridor. So there's a lot of interest in having charging stations that folks can stop at, just like they would stop at for gas, a place where they can have their vehicle charged, and that those resources are available. With charging stations, you know, sometimes they're installed and they're there, but they maybe aren't on. So that happens to some people, and we need to make sure that they're working. And that's another service that we provide. We also have put on a number of EV ride and drive events. There was one in Glenwood Springs, one in Grand Junction over the last year. And they've had a lot of interest in those, really good attendance. And dealerships will show up and bring their, all their different EV and sometimes hybrid models. And this just really helps people understand what it takes to own an EV, help get them some experience with driving one. They're really, I, I got to actually drive one as part of one of these events, and they're really smooth and fast. And their range is just increasing all the time. So we provide those services as well. Like I said, Martine is bilingual and has been ensuring that we have opportunities for Spanish speakers as well. And then as part of our active transportation program, we were able to provide 40 e-bikes to Garfield County residents this last year. And we had 340 applications for those 40 e-bikes. So a lot of demand for, for bikes. And actually, if you know of anyone who didn't get one of those, but they might be income-qualified, the state is actually providing that as well. So I don't like to say giving away, because they did, recipients did have to pay $150 for either like a, a $2,000 or $3,000 bike. So obviously, it's a really good deal, but we wanted to make sure that folks were just at least a little bit invested and that the bike, you know, wasn't just like free for them. But that was 80% of area median income qualified to get those 40 bikes. So we're hoping to get that grant again this next year, planning to apply for that, and hope that Silt residents will be interested in those bikes as well. We did, we had other criteria, like folks who live and work in the community, that they'd be using the bike, so that it's, the intent is really to take vehicles off the road and being able to use the bike for short trips, you know, around town versus maybe just riding it for fun, even though they are really fun to drive or ride. Alright, next slide. So last year, we updated our, our Energy Action Plan for Garfield Clean Energy. And this wasn't a new plan. We've had one in place, at least with this current Energy Action Plan format, since 2017. But we updated the goals to make them more reflective of the progress that we've made and kind of where the technology is at and the, the goals of our stakeholders. And we completed this plan in support, or with support from Xcel Energy's Partners in Energy Program. So they actually did a lot of the work, writing the plan, once the, the Task Force and Stakeholder Group was able to provide input. And this picture, you can see here, we wanna highlight that there was, we really did try to get representation from a broad swath of the community, so that it was really an inclusive process that we, that everyone's voices were heard and what they wanted to see moving forward. And we believe that these goals will benefit Garfield County residents and also protect our environment. Next slide. So these are the five goals, and they're really all by 2030, which is getting closer every day. So we are, are trying to make sure we're making meaningful progress on this. So we wanna have a 12% energy savings in the built environment. So that's really our, our commercial, government, and residential buildings. And 12% sounds kind of small, but it actually is a pretty dramatic, some of the math that we've done is a pretty dramatic increase in the number of buildings that get energy savings measures. So between CARE and WAP and the Re-Energize Program, we have implemented energy-saving measures in, I think, 100, roughly 125 homes per year, and we need to increase that up to about 600. So we don't like to use the word ambitious, because it makes it sound like it's like not achievable, but we know that that's, that's a big increase. So not only in the, the funding to mitigate the homes, but then also the jobs that it takes and the resources that it takes to do that. So that's kind of part of that goal number five as well, is really addressing these economic benefits of clean, clean energy jobs. We wanna have 100%, oh, sorry, 100% carbon-free electricity by 2030. And we really think of this as renewable electricity. And it's really in line with what a lot of our utility providers are saying. I forget the exact years, but I, I believe that Holy Cross is, is nearing 90% renewables fairly soon. And they were part of shaping this plan as well. So we just wanna make sure that you all know that this is, is where the utilities are headed as well. I think Xcel is 80% renewable by 2030, and then 100% by 2050, something along those lines. And Glenwood Springs is already 100% renewable through their contract with the Municipal Electric Association of Nebraska. I'm getting better at my acronyms, I think. And then the clean mobility goal, we wanna have 15% of all of the registered vehicles on the road be electric, which I believe is about a 20-fold increase from where we're at right now. But again, we've, we really feel like the industry is driving this trend toward. But again, we've, we really feel like the industry is driving this trend towards EVs. And then we also want to have an increase in multimodal transportation through programs like the e-bike program that we talked about. And then goal number four, greenhouse gas emissions is really a, just kind of a byproduct of achieving the other goals. So a hundred percent reduction in emissions from the electric sector and then a ten percent reduction from natural gas. And Black Hills Energy, who provided, or who supplies a lot of the natural gas for Garfield County, was also involved in this stakeholder process and has communicated an interest in reducing this more from the transmission side. And then like I talked about, we are also focusing on clean energy economic development and jobs. We are talking with Colorado Mountain College about training opportunities for folks who are interested in solar and other programs. Electric, being in electrician is really an important part of being able to do some of this work. So we have hosted some forums and our executive director is going to be talking with the Garfield County Economic Development Forum, I believe, on Thursday. So trying to get, make some progress there as well.
And I'll just jump into, this is also supporting, supporting jobs in general. So I know we have a lot of natural gas and oil employees in the area and supporting the economic development of all jobs, not just clean energy jobs. We want to make sure we're not sending people out of the area. We want to support the residents here.
Yep. And when folks have, are spending less money on their energy bills, they have more money to spend on other things. So it's also a benefit. All right, next slide. That wraps up our presentation. We just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to talk with you all. Our, this collaboration wouldn't be possible without the Town of Silt's participation and our partnership with your, your staff. And we're glad we're able to provide services in your community. And the funding request for 2024 is in the memo. I believe it's three thousand four hundred, which is about a five percent increase from last year. We are asking all of our DCE members to increase their contribution to account for inflation and the cost of providing these services, but also to really allow these programs to thrive moving forward. And with that, I'll take any questions?
GCE, just an extension of Clear, what's the connection there, Morgan?
Sure. So Garfield Clean Energy is its own kind of government entity and Clear Clean Energy Economy for the Region is a nonprofit. And GCE, Clear kind of actually functions with this program as like basically a fee for service. So we have a, a scope of work and a contract that we sign every year with GCE that the, the president of GCE signs to, for us to provide these services. So we, we bill to GCE, we provide financial reports and the finance committee reviews our, our hours and, and the time we're spending on that. So we're, we're, GCE doesn't have their own staff. And that really kind of allows us to provide for like a town or a city that would be interested in having a sustainability program, we kind of function as that sustainability program if they're interested at a much lower cost than like having a staff person do that work. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Do you have in a dollar amount, how much the Town of Silt has saved with the panels on the roof?
You know, I don't have a dollar amount off the top of my head for that. But it is certainly with, with the bills and the history that we have, it is something I could calculate for you guys.
I just thought that'd be kind of cool on your chart line, you know, there's how much you've saved and on your bill and everything.
Yes, it would.
And my next question would be, how are the solar panels? Like one of the, one of the first slides, you had the crew with the solar panel array system. You mentioned that that funds the program. How, how does that fund, fund the program? How does your solar panels fund these programs that you guys do?
The solar panels don't fund the program. That slide with the board, it, I think what Morgan was saying in that slide is that the GC, the work that GCE does with CMC being a partner is they asked for some help in getting this solar array. So as a part of the GCE service that we provide to CMC and to all of the municipalities in the county, we were able to help make that happen for CMC.
Okay, then, so your funding doesn't come from any solar or anything? It just comes from government assistance and?
Yeah, from this partnership.
Okay.
And we, we do receive outside grants beyond just the GCE partners. And that's kind of like I was saying, how we, we leverage what the partners contribute to get additional funding. So we've gotten, we've received other state and federal grants that we've applied for. We have received a notice of intent from the Colorado Energy Office about code adoption and supporting resources there. So we're, there are, there are other sources of funding for the programs, but the heart of, of GCE is, is really funded through contributions from members.
So like, I know like inter, oil and gas always contributes to other entities or whatever programs that they believe in. Have you guys reached out to these solar panel companies or any of them to like maybe contribute? Because I mean, you're promoting their product or EVs or bikes or?
Well, a couple of years ago, 2021, I mean, this would be the closest that I know of that, that we have partnered with, is we did a program called Solar Ops. And GCE was able to sort of do a group buy to help residents of Garfield County lower the price on solar to make it easier to, to do that, put those on, put that on their homes. But I guess that was more of a partnership and an agreement with the sol, this particular solar installer.
So they, they lowered their price of their product to help citizens put on their roof?
Yes.
And that was just for a year or?
That was a one, one-year program that we tried, 2021. And we just haven't done it again.
Do you see the trend of putting solar on your roof, the price going up? Or is it coming down for the future?
Well, I think the solar, solar really is actually taking off on its own in terms of being economically viable. So I think the, part of that is that the cost of solar panels themselves is going down dramatically. If you were paying, you, you know, maybe saw some information in the news about Holy Cross Energy's proposed rate change for net metering to rooftop solar. And that, you know, there was some, some concerns about that. And so we do know that utility providers are just evaluating how, and they've since announced that they rescinded that rate change for now. But they are, you know, they're paying attention to how, how rooftop solar is, is addressed. So all the while, their mix of, of solar in their utility, you know, supply is, is going up as well. So, and I will say too, with some of the events that we put on, we have gotten sponsorships, not necessarily from Tesla or something, but there are a lot of smaller companies that help to ensure charging stations are operable and work in the EV space or solar space that have sponsored some of these events. So they do contribute funding in other ways, even if it's not necessarily directly as part of the, the GCE budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great.
No, nothing.
Well, thank you so much and we are glad, like I said, to be able to talk with you all and let you know about our programs.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the water treatment plant funding discussion, the establishment of a contingency reserve. And I will turn this over to Administrator Lehman.
Okay, let's try this again. This is from two weeks ago, I think, or not quite two weeks ago. I think I made, made it way too complicated. So tonight, I'm going to try to make it easier for me anyway. So I think the result of tonight's discussion will be to reduce our loan amount by one million dollars. And to reserve a million dollars in a contingency fund in case we need it. So, and the reason, well, one of the things that we've been sensitive about all along is the concern about the average rate payer's bill, monthly bill. And to that end, we've brought it down from, I think, around a hundred and seventy dollars in those first couple wags of trying to figure out what this was going to cost to, I think we're at one oh four, a hundred and four dollars today a month. Reducing the loan amount by another million will reduce the average rate payer's monthly bill from about a hundred and four to a hundred dollars. It'll also save about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars in interest payments over the, over the twenty-year term of the loan. So I'm going to, I think Jim's on the line with us tonight. And I'm happy to ask him to go over on page two of your board packet. There's that table that we've looked at a few times. I don't know that we need to do it again, but we're certainly willing to, to do that if you like. Or we can just go into a conversation about how we would achieve that million-dollar?
Reduction.
Reduction, thank you, in the, in the, in the borrowing. Or what questions can we answer? Or we can have Jim go through that. I should probably point out that a couple of things. The fee for Newberry is in there now. For the one point three million for construction management, we're still kind of working with them. We have a, I think our last invoice from them on the, or no, we have one more invoice to go from them on design. And we'll see what that's going to be. There might be some money left in that to apply to this. I'm not sure yet. We've been working with them. And the EIAF grant amount is in this, in this table that, that Jim has put together. If we don't get the grant, which we will know about on or about November tenth, we'll probably know verbally before that, but we'll know in writing on the tenth, then either way, it's in there. Well, if we don't get it, then the million dollars in, in contingency funding that we're talking about tonight will take that place, take its place in the, in that spreadsheet. The reason we're in our, the reason we kind of need to firm that up today is Friday this week is our deadline on certifying exactly what we need for the loan. Based on the fact they need to shop the bonds and they need to do some preliminary operating sta, offering statement. The first part of next month is when they need to really start getting that going for an offering the week after Thanksgiving.
So I guess for clarification, because when we talked last week, it was if we got the million-dollar grant plus the ARPA funds. So was it, am I understanding it right? Was it two million or just one million? Or, because weren't we going to use the ARPA funds toward this anyway?
We, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were really talking about one point eight million.
Yes.
That we could, that we could have, we could have reduced the offering, the, the loan offering by, or the loan, loan amount by the one point eight million. We could have done that, but we were having a conversation about how much would be left in reserve. So we haven't had that reserve conversation yet. I think we should have it, but it's not, we can't, I don't think, we, we can't do it tonight. I think our best bet tonight would be to say, we've got enough money for a million dollars. If for some reason we don't get the grant, we can reduce our loan amount by a million. And if, if for some reason we don't get the, the grant, then we'll have that eight hundred in ARPA plus two hundred in borrowing and we'll make that the million and we'll still reduce the, the amount.
Got you. So it's one million instead of the one point eight?
Well, yes.
Okay.
I believe that you can afford to put, if, if we get the grant, we should still put the one, the eight hundred thousand ARPA into this project. But I'm not going to, I, I don't think we should do that tonight just because we're, I think there's too many open questions. If you're, there's, there's just, we're concerned about the contingencies and all of that stuff, which, you know, we have a C Mar contract with, with our contractor. It shouldn't go higher unless we have design changes, which we shouldn't because they've all been working together on this. We're not going to see anything above what the C Mar has given us. That said, I'm not willing to say, let's commit that eight hundred thousand dollars tonight and reduce the loan by one point eight. But I truly believe that we will be, we will be able to apply the eight hundred thousand to the project and we'll apply it toward the end and we'll make, I think we'll make, probably make interest payments and we'll reduce some of the, at the, at the, kind of at the back end of the project. Jim, do you have anything to add to that?
Sense, yes.
No, actually Jeff, I think you did a great job of explaining it. And I think the issue is that you're, you're kind of stuck with one of two things. You're stuck with using the ARPA funds and not reducing the million dollars for the EIAF grant. Or you do the EIAF grant reduction in the anticipation that you're going to get that million dollars. But if you don't get that grant, you've got the ARPA funds to backfill that. I think the concern is, is that if we use both the ARPA funds and the, and count on that EIAF grant, that could put the, the utilities and the town in a difficult position if that grant doesn't come through. Because you, you would have reduced your, your loan amount to a point where you've got to backfill it from somewhere else and there just isn't necessarily the cash available to do that. So I think, I think Jeff has kind of laid it out that we're basically recommending, let's, let's say we're going to get the, you know, let's, let's assume that we're going to get the EIAF grant for a million dollars, reduce the loan by that amount. And in the event that we don't get that million dollars, we've got the ARPA funds to backfill that million dollars plus some additional unspent two thousand twenty-three capital project funds for the boring project that kind of fills that gap that wouldn't be there, that, that would be there if the EIAF grant does not come through. And you're not putting the utilities in a, in a cash poor position at that point. And at the end of the project, there's still an opportunity that if you haven't had to use any additional funds, that you can kind of use those ARPA funds to, to reduce the debt payments. So that's, that's basically the recommendation at this point is just to, let's just say we're going to reduce the loan amount by that million dollars and everything else will kind of wash out after the fact of borrowing. We don't want to skinny the borrowing up too much in the event something doesn't come to fruition.
I see where you're going with it, yes.
So I'm just curious, how much interest will we save on one, one point eight million? One point four almost in twenty years?
Uh, I would probably, not quite one point four, it's probably about one point two to one point three.
I was just curious.
I don't think it's worth putting the town in a cash strap situation if, if we don't get the EIAF grant, so.
No, I like this solution. It's, it, it kind of balances both ends. Still allows us to use eight hundred thousand on the back end if we need to, if we get the million. But if we don't get the million, then we're still in a good position.
Yeah.
I think it's the most correct use of the fund, of the reserves and whatnot.
So correct me if I'm wrong, if we don't get the EIAF grant and we allocate the eight hundred, are we not in violation of the reserve policy that we agreed to last year? We're, we're still compliant?
Yes.
We'd be if we used the one point eight and didn't get the grant. Then we'd have to use it.
No, we still wouldn't be in violation of the twenty percent.
Twenty percent, yeah.
We would still have that in there.
But it'd be really skinny.
It, we'd be getting, I think we'd be getting close to that. And I think Jim can, you know, go into some detail about, we are going to dip below that in the next couple of years, probably. But we're going to have a, a solid revenue stream. So we'll, we'll be able to bounce back from that. Jim, do you want to touch, touch on that real quick?
Yeah, I, I mean, over the next couple of years, you're going to be running pretty thin in terms of your operational expenses and your debt payments for your revenue stream. And so if you were to dip below your reserve requirement, it's going to stay there for a couple of years and it's going to take some time to build it back up. I think, you know, this is a pretty conservative tack to take in terms of navigating your finances to make sure that you've got adequate reserves. I, I think there would be some concern if we were to apply not only the one million EIAF grant, but also the ARPA funds, that if all of a sudden you didn't get the EIAF grant, you would be, you'd be pushing below your reserve requirement, your, your, your stated policy, which policies are just guidelines and you can always deviate from the policy. But that's not necessarily something you want to do.
Do communities just function mostly on reserves? Do they, are they allowed to have lines of credits, Jim? That can help offset some of the possible expenditures or that's not existent for municipalities at all?
It, it, it is, it's generally, when it comes to, it's, it's kind of funny. Municipal side, the, the, the cities and the towns tend not to operate that way.
Got it.
School districts, on the other hand, sometimes operate that way. And it has to do with the amount of resources that come from non-locally generated taxes. And school districts tend to rely a lot more on transfers from the state government or the federal government than they do from local taxes. Municipalities generally don't operate on that kind of lines of credit situation. There, typically cities and towns are much more frugal when it comes to their operations and, and, and stay away from those lines of credit. Not to say that you can't do it, it's just not normal.
Yeah, and I can see the fiscal responsibility within that and decision making, but the only reason I ask is looking into being really low in reserves for one or two years. You know, just looking at something potentially to help offset in case of an emergency within that particular fund. But that doesn't seem like it's something that we need to be looking at particularly as of this time.
And I'm probably, you know, in my former life as a municipal advisor, I'm probably the worst guy. My goal in setting up the finances and the plan is to try to get you away from having to borrow money. So that you don't have, because when you have to go out and borrow money, that's the most expensive money that you're ever going to come by. And so my goal is to get you to a position where you're not borrowing money and you're able to cash finance the majority of your, you know, day-to-day, year-to-year operations and capital expenditures. Because when you have to, when you have to go out and borrow money, now all of a sudden that becomes expensive.
Okay.
Because you're, you're stuck paying whatever interest rate. And, you know, unfortunately, interest rates, you guys are doing this project at probably the worst time in interest rate history in the last, you know, couple of decades. But, you know, in, in the long, you know, scheme of things, interest rates still are not nearly as bad as they were back in the, you know, eighties when interest rates were significantly higher than they are now.
But since the market is volatile, bond sales, they could be on the lower end depending on market conditions, once we put a package out there potentially, because if the market is fluctuating as it is, but we never know until the package is ready and the bonds are up for sale, that's just, yeah.
I'm hopeful that you're going to hit a good day when they actually sell the bonds. But the market forces right now seem to be working against you.
So I'm kind of torn because our reserves are there to fix the plant and this is what we're, exactly what we're doing is fixing and getting a new water plant. And we actually are taking a loan out too, which like you, you're trying to keep us from taking loans out. And that's a substantial amount of interest we're going to be paying on money that we already do have. If I were to buy a vehicle, I would put the money I have in my pocket on that vehicle so I didn't have to pay that interest rate. So, you know, I'm torn both ways and I do see the keeping the reserves up that high, but I mean, in reality, how many times have you had a million dollar project recently, either like, I mean, to fix something, emergency or something, you know?
Knock on wood, none of our emergencies have been that bad.
Right, that's like an earthquake and pipes going everywhere, type situation.
No, that's just, that's just one break in that fourteen inch line.
Right.
That would be a million dollar project right there. Because that's going to move a ton of water and it runs right through a subdivision, so.
So what do we do? Do we do contingency plans for things that we have out there of funds? Can we journal and borrow from different funds for emergencies? You know, are there like actions that we can enact? Shall those things occur? And then as a town, if we're bringing our reserves down as low as we are within a couple of years, I would definitely be looking in contingency and plans and presenting maybe to us as the board what we could do if a five hundred thousand dollar project comes about and where we could potentially come from. That would put me at ease, just having some sort of contingency plans.
Our general fund is pretty healthy.
Okay.
Our fund balance is, is. Oh, what is it? I got it right here.
But if we recombine that, weren't there some implications?
Yeah, we can only feed so much to the wastewater.
Yeah.
Water, wastewater.
It was a hard limit and there was a, there was a legal repercussion as well.
Yeah.
Like I don't perceive the policy we crafted last year as, as Jimmy had stated a few minutes ago, and I respectfully disagree. It's not a guideline. It's a control mechanism. It's, we all have budgets. And while we may dip into them periodically in the event of an emergency, the thought of being upside down or under that amount for a number of years, I think it's a disservice to our community because none of us is a psychic and we may not be in these chairs when it happens. But I still think we have that responsibility to the future and to ourselves. We passed that.
Well, I think also.
Now we're, we're withholding it because we're going to save a few dollars now and it looks good and there is an impact on the populace now. I get it. This was passed as a control mechanism. We agreed on it as such. And less than a year later, we're saying, except now.
Well, I think the thing of being a little more conservative and only do, reducing about a million now, which is what's being proposed is a good move because then if we don't get the, the, um, the million dollar grant, we're still going to have a decent fund balance. Because while we're building a new water plant, if something happens, we have to do something to keep the old one going, which could cost us and dip into that. So we don't want to have our reserves low and then have something like that happen.
A lot of pressure on you tomorrow, Trey.
You're going to.
Yeah, but I'm not talking.
Well.
Maybe for like ten seconds apparently. Rehearsal today I get ten seconds.
You got about thirty seconds.
I'm just going to point at you two and back away.
Notice Amy has just come on. Do you have any like comments on the, the funds, Amy? And being able to reassign and journal entries, certain funds if needed? Do you have any comments on that?
So I, I've been here the, the whole meeting. I just haven't turned my camera on. I would like to keep some money in reserves because you also have to think that the fund balance isn't just for the water. It's for wastewater as well. So that's my, that's my one comment about that. And as far as, I mean, like we can loan from other funds, but that's still requiring that fund to pay it back. And so it's just like kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul. So I would prefer not reducing the leveraged loan by more than a million dollars to keep us more solvent.
That's where I'm at.
I'm, I'm okay with that too. I just want to, you know, it's a, we have, we, I want to make sure our citizens know that we are exhausting and that our citizens are going to tighten their belts and go without. But the town's not. I mean, we have an option to do that, but we're not making that decision to do that. We're going to keep ourselves safe and we're still going to do our things that we're going to do, you know what I mean? So keeping, and there's a chance that the Dole grant is going to come through. There's a chance it's not, so we'll be in the same boat if that happens. But either way, I'm fine keeping that, doing the contingency plan, reserving. If we don't get the Dole grant, use the, what we had.
So if we do have to use the reserve, we would be tapping the million dollar that you're mentioning, Amy? From the, is that the same million dollar that we were talking about, just to make it clear for me and for?
So if we don't get the Dole grant, then we will use the eight hundred thousand in ARPA funds and then two hundred thousand in saved capital projects that we didn't spend this year.
Which would leave us at the, close to the twenty percent according to our.
It's the two million.
And then Jim, if we don't use that as a contingency, we are looking at a rate increase from a hundred oh one to a hundred oh four?
No.
No, you're, we're actually looking at probably being in that hundred dollar range with the million dollar reduction.
Okay, with the reduction.
And, yes, and if at the end of the day you still have the ability to utilize the ARPA funds towards the end of the project, you may be able to bring that hundred dollar a month charge down a little bit further. But, you know, bringing the loan amount down for the leveraged loan by the million dollars brings us from about the hundred and four down to a hundred.
That's what's being proposed.
Yep.
I know.
And, and I will caveat that this is all based upon the estimates we've used in, you know, the interest rate and what the premium's going to be for the actual bond sale. And we won't know that until we actually sell the bonds. But that's our guess right now is that we're going to be, we're at a hundred and four right now without the million dollars. Adding the million dollars in there, we think we're going to get down to about a hundred.
So I think there's some confusion here. What's, we are going to say yes, that we're going to, we'll pretend that we're going to get the Dole grant. And if we don't, we use our million dollars. Opposed to using our million dollars and pretending we're getting the Dole grant. And then that's two million that we have to put out if Dole does not come through, or one point eight. Right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it'd be a one point eight and the ARPA funds we have to spend eventually anyway, so it's not like we can save them for years and years.
Yeah, twenty twenty-six, they have to be spent by.
And, and by reserving them tonight, I would argue that you've made plans to spend them on this project. Because that's one thing also with ARPA is that they ask you to have a plan to spend them by twenty twenty-four.
Well, we're going to spend them either now if we don't get the million, they'd be spent sooner or later on. Either way, the eight hundred thousand spent on this project.
That's what you'll say tonight and that will be, they will be reserved for the project.
But we'll also have that time to add more to the reserve.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, and we're going to have more information for you.
Okay, and we have a response about.
We're, we're, we're going to bring back a more, have a more robust, robust, robust conversation.
Easy for you to say.
It is at nine o'clock. Good night, yeah.
I like this plan. I mean, yeah, I don't have a problem.
About the reserves. So we'll, we'll talk more about reserves.
And I'm going to be extremely confident we're going to get that grant.
There you go. Positive thinking.
Just don't wear that Bears shirt tomorrow.
I think about you, Sam. I remember a couple of months ago when you were like, can it just be ninety-nine dollars? Can we just keep it two digits?
We're almost there.
We're almost there.
Well, my friend Jim up there says it can be ninety-nine dollars. We can make it ninety-nine dollars. It just means that there are a couple of things that would go out to twenty thirty-two instead of twenty thirty-one, you know, it's just. And who knows if our issuance, you know, if our premium is good enough, maybe, maybe all that happens.
So the only, only other thing I have is looking at this is we had discussed just paying straight from the beginning for the bond council and local council instead of loaning, getting a loan on that forty thousand. Amy, do we have enough to pay for that upfront instead of?
Sure.
Getting a loan for that?
Yes, we do. Yes.
I think that's where I look at it, is buying a car. As I can go ahead and put that forty thousand down, but I want to save for when, eight months from now. And my, my transmission goes out or my washer dryer breaks and you got to cover that, so. So I think we're all kind of on board that somehow we, a million dollars from EIAF or the contingency is as presented.
Yep, yep.
Yep, I agree. Yes.
This is an action item, so we will need an official motion on that, don't we?
Yes.
Okay.
What I'd like to see is if whoever wants to make that motion, the last two bullet points in the presentation, maybe the motion is to establish a hundred, our one million dollar reserve as discussed, actually I would say, including ARPA funds and two hundred thousand dollars in savings from the boring project and direct staff to reduce the loan package by a million dollars. With the state revolving fund.
Yeah, what he said.
Somebody write it down.
He's writing it down. Mayor Pro Tem's writing it down.
He can make the motion that he.
Doesn't mean I'm saying it.
I can make a motion, that's okay.
I'm the stenographer.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the water treatment plant funding discussion with the establishment of contingency reserve, including the one million dollar and the two hundred thousand, the one million dollar as reserve, the two hundred thousand dollar from the saving boring and the one million dollar reserve as the ARPA. Reducing the loan amount by one million from the state revolving funding. Anything else, mister?
Eight hundred thousand on the ARPA.
From ARPA.
Eight, I'm so, the one million dollar reserve total with eight hundred thousand dollar ARPA and two hundred thousand dollars from the saving boring, better. Okay, reducing, reducing the loan by one million dollar, the state revolving fund. That's it.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion by trustee Poston to approve the water treatment plant funding discussion establishment of a contingency reserve using the. One million dollars in state revolving fund money and as a contingency plan using eight hundred thousand dollars from ARPA. And. Two hundred thousand dollars from unspent. Money on the boring project. That was seconded by trustee Flores. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right.
Hey, Jim, you want to talk to Austin tomorrow?
Yes.
Sure.
Thumbs up.
Sure, I'll follow up with him.
Thank you. I'll be getting a million dollars with Trey.
And Derek.
And Derek.
I'm going to go home and iron my ascot.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the impacts of proposition HH discussion. I will turn this over to administrator Lehman.
Uh, this is a hard conversation for me to have because I don't know a lot about it. I don't know that there are a lot of people who know a lot about it. Uh, at least in my neck of the woods. I sent you this morning or this afternoon, actually this evening. Info from AGNC on a debate that was coming up on Nine News, and if we all watch that, we'll we'll all know more than we do now. But I think suffice it to say that. CML, Club Twenty. SDI, the Special District. Administrate SDA, Special District Administration. And I'm told CCI, who's its county, the county. Equivalent of the CML have all are all opposed to. Proposition HH. In that document that I. That documents that I. Gave to you, I think one of actually I did not give to you. You probably got it in the blue book. Uh, there's a very, I think, a good. Conversation about it in there. It's thirteen pages. I think. And maybe Amy can help me with this a little bit, but suffice it to say. That our budget will be either. Uh, reduced our this would be our property tax budget will either be reduced. By sixty thousand ish, thirty thousand around or zero, depending on how the. Uh, how the vote goes next Tuesday. So. It it will. If it passes, it will drastically change the way property taxes are applied to government. There are. School districts are treated differently than. Home rule municipalities are treated differently than statutory communities are different from. Fire districts and and other districts like that. So there it's just it's it's more complicated. I I really Jerry stopped by last week and kind of reminded us that this was kind of a big deal. And so I've I've spent some time reading about it and I honestly can't. Give you a good. Presentation on it because it's just there's a lot of moving parts and pieces. So I think CML at some point put out a. A a sample. Resolution. Opposing it for their municipalities. I've talked with Newcastle and Rifle and Parachute. None of them even really took that up because. You know, they they I don't think they wanted to. To counsel their voters because it's just one of those things. It's just it's it's going to be left to each of us.
It's a bad idea. That's just my thoughts on it. It's just all the way around a bad idea.
Well, I I will send you some information tomorrow that AGNC, in fact, I may have sent that already today. Uh, AGNC sent me some stuff today. There was some stuff from the the. How affects municipalities from the blue book is in that packet along with. A letter from the assessor from Mesa County. And, oh, a news a newspaper article from the Post Independent. Where they interviewed Jim Yelwiko, the, I think, the treasurer.
County assessor.
Assessor. Here in in Garfield County. Uh, all of those people expressed opposition to the to HH.
But the bad thing is the way it's written, everybody's going to vote yes on it because they think, oh, I'm getting a property tax. It's the way it's written. It you really, yeah, and and I recommend everybody read into this thing because the way it's written, you think, oh, everybody's getting a tax reduction. No, you're not. But the way people think they're all going to vote yes because, oh, my taxes are getting reduced and then it'll get passed and we'll be, you know, here to suffer the consequences.
And it's also, I I believe, and Jim, maybe you know the answer to this. I believe it's a. A referendum on Tabor. I think it completely reverses Tabor.
Yeah, I think basically we've all run a few years, but and it does affect from what I've been checking, like the fire department is going to get hit hard. More than we are. They're going to lose, it was in the paper, almost seven hundred thousand. The water district, our auditors were there, we could lose three, four hundred thousand. So it affects every in it, but it affects them all. And that's kind of why I brought it to you because I don't know what it's going to do for the town because we need to know on budget. Is it going to be? Twenty thousand, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand.
Well, I can tell you our we're anticipating in property tech, we this year. In twenty three, we're anticipating, well, we've probably already been paid three hundred and fifty six thousand is what we brought in in. In property taxes this year, and I think it looks like it would in a in a in a all things being equal. It would be four hundred and fifty three next year. Um, and that's because people are being taxed more. So I mean, you have to think about that, too, right? But. With. Prop HH, if it passes, it could be. Somewhere closer to four hundred thousand. So it'd be a reduction of maybe fifty.
Then an increase from last year.
Sorry?
But then an increase from last year.
Right. And then it it'll creep up again because. You know, the state is not going to backfill forever. For one thing, their Tabor refunds will start to ratchet down.
So is it an inaction of a new type of tax or is it a revamping of an existing type of tax?
Yes.
Revamping of inflation.
I think it's both. It's.
With more detail detailing characteristics and breakdowns and.
Yeah, I I'd recommend to everybody read that article about the fire district. You know, because it's it's very informative and it it does it is an eye opener as to how much it will affect them.
I spoke with Mike. Sawyer today and he he said he's still trying to sort through it. He suggested going on the Colorado Sun. They've had done a series of articles on it and I I did read some of them. And they do have some some good analysis in there. I was looking for. Well. Andrea asked, you know, are they new taxes or are they revamping old ones? The the intent, I think, is good in that it's supposed to provide, first of all, provide some property tax. Relief by lowering lowering assessment rates for both residential and certain types of non-residential properties. And then two, it imposes a limit on growth in property tax revenue for local governments like ours. And then last, it it seeks voter approval. To a revenue change that would allow the state to retain and spend. Part of the state surplus, which is the Tabor cap, which I think is what. You know, I think a lot of people are most concerned about. That it kind of does away with the whole Tabor. Architecture.
So the Tabor architecture benefits municipality directly more so than when funds go out into the state.
Well, and and that's the other thing that CML is most concerned about is that it. Takes away. Local decision making and vests it in the state.
Yeah, I'd rather see those tax dollars be, you know, here to help us as opposed to help the state.
Used here, managed here, controlled here.
Yes.
Jim, have you done any work on that or reading on that?
Uh, I've done some, um, you know, basically. Prop HH is a response to a certain. Portion of the legislature looking at a California style Prop thirteen. Taxation enactment. It basically is taking it, you know, and and I'm. I I have to I have to couch my comments in that some of them start to get. Opinionated from my perspective and looking at it. But it's it is a reduction of local control. And I think that's probably the biggest concern that. You know, CML, SDA, CCI have have expressed is it's a reduction of local control. But then on the back end, they kind of snuck in this. Hey, we're gonna, you know, take away some of the Tabor refund. We're going to get to retain some of that to backfill. And my only comment to that kind of back end, oh, we'll backfill you, we'll take care of you. Ask the school districts how well they did when we passed marijuana legalized marijuana, and that was supposed to cure all the funding ills of the school districts. It didn't work out the way it was intended to. And so a and and I again, I have to say that this is a lot of my own opinion and what I've read. This isn't necessarily a well balanced. You know, portrayal of what Prop HH would actually do. Because I'm I'm on the cynical side of what it's actually going to do and it's it's taking away your control. And it's vesting it in the state and the state's making promises. And the state doesn't always have the greatest track record of living up to those promises.
Just pigbacking on your comment, I'm a strong believer that where the funds is earned is reinvested and those decisions are making are being made. There is a strong reinvestment that goes with it. I like for the funds to stay where they mostly got generated from. Especially when they have initially been assigned that way through, you know, Tabor. Or other regulations that have benefited municipalities and we have seen it. Benefit them directly in a grateful way. So I'm a great believer of funds staying. Uh, in that way and allowing the municipality and its representatives to be making those decisions for them. So. With that being said, I will do a lot more research with within that as well, but that's my overall general opinion. About how funds are well reinvested potentially and however we decide to vote on that, I definitely take these in consideration.
Well, I probably should have started this conversation with maybe maybe others of you who've done. Uh, some research on this that could enlighten us more than what we.
I've done some, but I was looking forward to you clearing it all up.
I was gonna research it and I saw the packet and I was like, oh.
Jeff's got this. Sit back. Be enlightened.
You know, I felt I felt better when I talked to Sawyer and he he didn't know any better, so. It's just a it's there's probably a few people that have it under wraps, you know, have it all.
I think about it in the context of the the various times that we've spoken about how the state. Does not generally think about our region of it. We've talked about it with C dot. We've talked about it, I think, with IMTPR and and other. Larger. State-run agencies and how we're always the last in line. And I see this going in the same direction, maybe not in the near term, but certainly in the long term. The state's not good at giving money back and when and the rare occasion that they do, it's not going to be to us. It just isn't because it never has been. I don't see them breaking with that habit or that behavior. I think they'll focus on the urban centers because that's where the majority of their voters are. It's self-serving, but it's true. But that's my opposition to it.
And yeah, I don't understand it one hundred percent, but I understand enough of it that I don't like it. You know.
Okay, any thoughts on HH? Okay. Next up is September twenty twenty three financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So seventy five percent of the year has elapsed. We are doing really well with. Sales tax revenue. We're up fourteen thousand. This month compared to the same month last year. We are at a hundred and two percent of our revenues for the general fund. So quite a bit ahead on that. Use tax, we're at about eighty seven percent, which is higher than the seventy five percent. We are right in line with our trash service fees, our water fees, our wastewater fees and our irrigation fees. With where the year, the time has elapsed in the year. We're doing well on. Our expenses for. All of our funds and catching up finally with the Silk Housing Authority. Getting them to. Get our rents turned in in a timely manner and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Um, hey, treasure Tucker, I know you don't have to be here tonight, but thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
You want to have anything on budget?
No.
All right. Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
All right, we'll jump into administrator and staff comments.
I don't have.
Anyway, any takers?
Okay.
I don't have any.
All right, update from the board, board comments unless. Unless that was someone get ready to talk. Okay, trustee Poston.
Nothing comes to mind right now. Just want to thank you, everybody, for the hard work and let's continue moving forward, making silk great.
I saw the street sweeper out. They were vacuuming out the tree wells. Thought that was a great idea, so. Pretty cool.
Trustee Britton?
Uh, just got some great events coming up with the Family Fall Fest next week. And then the other stuff coming up later on. Um, just remember as it's getting dark, time change isn't here yet. It's getting dark early, so just really be pay attention to the kids out there walking and people being out and about. Keep our community safe.
Okay, trustee Clausen.
Um, I have a question for Director Foner, that alley behind eight ten main. I noticed it's still closed, La Placida, Old Tim's Tools building. Still says alley closed. Isn't that the one that was you guys or the contractor potholed and you were going to put a new line in?
Yeah, we're putting a new sewer line in. They haven't showed up yet, but I didn't realize it was closed.
Yeah, the signs are still there and I didn't know if that that needed to be opened before winter hit or.
Well, they're supposed to be here. I need to reach back out to them. They're supposed to be here at any minute. Any day and start that sewer line project.
Oh, okay.
And then the alley will get paved next year when the asphalt plants start churning again.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I have a question for Nicole, if she's still around.
She is.
I am.
All right, my question pertains to the. P and Z meeting last week. And I just wanted some clarification and to maybe drum up some more interest in it so you actually have people at the meeting. But I heard through one of the members of the historical park that you guys didn't have enough people or any people for public input. And you wanted more public input, so you reached out to like the historical park and this is in relation to the seven, sorry, the one oh one. Uh, Seventh Street building, the old bank building. And I didn't know if you could kind of give us an update or clarify. Any of that.
Um, I did not reach out to the historical park, nor do I know of anybody that did, so I'm not quite sure what exactly that was about.
Okay, yeah, they didn't talk to me, but evidently the chair reached out, you know, saying that. I I guess the public hearing was extended to the next meeting because they they needed more. I, I guess the public hearing was extended to the next meeting, because they, they needed more, or they wanted more input. And I didn't talk
Yes, it was continued, because they didn't have a clear operating plan that answered a couple more questions that the planning commission had.
Okay. Anyway, that, that's what I heard, that there wasn't anybody in the audience for the public hearing, and maybe this might help generate some interest to have some citizens actually come down there and, and see what it's about, and, you know, I, I mean, yeah.
Yes, we always welcome any, any comments that any citizens are willing to come down and, and be involved in.
Yeah, and, and that isn't something that'll come in front of the board, will it? That'll stay at
It will not. It's a site plan review.
Got you. All right, yeah, that, that was, that was my question I had for that. And, oh, the other question I had for Director Foner was, I noticed on the new part of Main Street, there weren't, you know, the concrete sidewalks, like on Seventh Street here, like the five-hundred block of Main. Are they, was there a reason not to have them, or?
What concrete sidewalks?
Oh, like, like at the intersection at Seventh to Main, the Main Street improvements, oh, you have the concrete sidewalk, at least on the north side, you know, of, of Main Street.
Goes across the streets?
Yes, it goes across the street. I didn't know if those were gonna be painted, or if there's any
We didn't put them in this project, because we were not, one, the Fifth Street side is gonna have to be redone when we get that far, because Fifth Street is actually in the wrong location. If you survey it, and we didn't have the extra funds to do that, and also to put them in like that, we would have had to rip out the fire department's side to come into ADA compliance and everything that goes along that. So it was more, we just wanted to get sidewalk to finish Main Street.
Got you. Okay, thanks for the clarification. And thanks for everybody for doing a good job, and keep up the good work, and that's it for me.
Question for Trey. How much cleanup did we have? How many dumpsters?
Four.
Four?
Well, I don't, they hauled them off today, and I don't think they were full.
Was it up or down from normal?
It was down this fall from normal, because usually we haul at least four full ones out, and then they take what's left over. This year, I hauled two full ones out on Wednesday, and then we didn't even get them full again, and they just, today was when they pulled them from the site, so. That's it.
Mayor Protem?
Uh, just another thank you to all the P&amp;Z commission applicants. It's gratifying to see more people willing to put in their own time and their own effort to support the community, so thank you to everyone who applied.
That's it. Okay. I was just gonna thank the town staff that worked this weekend at the town cleanup. It was nice to have that open on the weekend for people to stop by and drop branches off. I made a couple loads myself, so that was awesome. And then the only other thing I want to touch on, and I don't want to go into detail, because it doesn't really matter, I just want to thank our police department. There was a large case that got prosecuted last week that our, don't want to get teared up about this, that, that our police department helped with finding, getting justice for the victim, so. That's all I got. And with that, we have an executive session. So I will read this, and then we'll take a quick recess to get the executive session set up, so. I make a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh-two-four F, the Town Administrator Jeff Lehman's performance evaluation.
So second.
All right. Motion by the mayor to enter executive session, seconded by trustee Claussen. All is in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Trey.
Enjoy your evening.
Thank you, Trey.
Good evening.
Thanks, Trey.
All right, if we can get unmuted. There we go. Can you hear Sheila?
I can.
Okay, awesome. The time is now nine fifty-nine PM, and the executive session has concluded. No formal action was taken in the executive session. The participants in the executive session were, no one entered the executive session and no one left the executive session. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record.
Pardon?
Seeing none, the next agenda item is to make a motion in regards to Town Administrator Jeff Lehman's
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to, for Mr. Jeff, Mayor, Town Administrator Jeff Lehman for the amount of a five percent pay increase and then one percent increase for the 401K.
A. Match.
No, not match.
No, no, not match. Nope.
Just one percent, yeah, as you stated, yeah. It just, point of order, it's a 401A.
401A?
Not a 401K, yeah.
Okay, whatever it was.
All right.
Okay.
One second.
Uh, so we have a motion by trustee Seifert to approve an increase in Jeff Lehman Town Administrator's pay of five percent and a one percent 401A contribution increase. That was seconded by trustee Britnall. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And the next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Maybe some clarification?
Yes.
Is, is that effective tonight?
Retroactive to July.
July first.
July first, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Sheila.
Mr. Mayor, make
Thank you.
Do adjourn.
Second.
Uh, motion by trustee Seifert to adjourn the meeting, seconded by trustee Claussen. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Well, it's a good thing we all